Budget Committee on Energy, Climate Change and Environmental Justice. Let's go ahead and start with cards. We have two multiple card speakers. Herman, are you here? Followed by Adina Tesler. And Herman, you filled out cards from items one, two, and three, so you have three minutes, including your general public comment.
So, yes, the wetback's in the house. Wetback wants to talk about evaluating maintenance equipment, because I'm the only wetback who knows how to use equipment when cleaning my fucking yard, nigga. That's right. When you get equipment now, you try to crank it up, sets off some emissions. That fucking emission goes into your lungs like mine and causes asthma. And a bad cough like that, gentlemen in the background over there. But see, wetbacks gotta learn the strategy and timelines for operating your fucking pilot programs to assess the coast air quality. See, back in my day, a nigga like me didn't have a lawnmower, so you use a push lawnmower when some of you fucking niggas don't know what they're all about. Just a roadie motherfucking device with sharp edges, like a blade on the end, and just chop, 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 yeah. That's what it's used for. Wetback like me oughta use shit like that, because I work for minimum wage. Then on item two, Article Three, Chapter what? Fuck the municipal code and fuck your disposable plastic straw. Maybe if somebody would drink out of a straw, you wouldn't be so fucking fat like you, mommy. In addition to number three, Board of Public Works, I'm in favor of Enrique's Board of Public Works report. Because we gotta get all the fucking waste off the sidewalks and streets from those fucking immigrants, wetbacks who keep illegally dumping, thinking that it's a free country where you can dump your shit on sidewalk and streets. Just like brought out in Council Chambers today regarding Trump. Build that motherfucking wall, keep these fucking wetbacks in the country unless you come in with a green card or Visa and you wanna fucking work. That way you get the same fucking services I get, the same mental health that fucking dumbo fellow up there looks stupid moving his finger around his head for. Now, my general public comment. You see, folks, they tried to stop us and prevent us from supporting our chancellor, Mr. Donald Trump, because Donald Trump wants to build either a fence, a wall, or a bridge that separates wetbacks from Americans. Americans who are exposed to typhus, hepatitis, and all these fucking diseases that we're not used to. That's why you go to Kaiser for a free shot every fucking year, not like me. Just walk around the street coughing and hacking shit and spitting all over the fuck you want. And the reason why we got rats here that are so big is because we got fat fucking politicians sticking their fucking straws up their ass, doing nothing about it. So get on your fucking task and do something about it, Bonn, you fucking chonggo, you and your fuck stupid son.
Get back on, get back, you're not addressing any--
I'm addressing you, bitch, and that's my final comment.
Thank you, Mr. Herman.
You're welcome.
Have a great day. Our next speaker is Adina Tesler. You might wanna sit on the other chair. Yeah, go ahead.
I want to speak on two.
You are gonna speak on two. I have you down for two and three.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, because you did multiple cards, so I took those speakers first.
Thanks.
So go ahead and give you, do you want general public comments, or?
No.
No? Okay, just-- So you have two minutes to speak on items two and three.
Good afternoon.
I know, that was a lot.
Yeah.
What can I tell you?
Sorry, it takes me a second to come back. I don't know.
Good old freedom of speech. Go ahead.
Deep breath. So, I'm here today on behalf of the California Restaurant Association, and--
You get closer to the mic, it's hard to hear you.
Sorry. And, number one, I wanted to address the straw policy. I've been here in front of you a few times to discuss it. Our biggest issue at this point for the restaurants is a lack of consistency. The state and the county policy was implemented January 1st. The state is a request-only, dine-in-only policy. The county is a offer policy, everywhere, no exemptions, no dispensers. And from what I understand, the city's policy is a request-only with some exemptions for drive-throughs, no dispensers. But as you can see, each policy is entirely different. And what we've found from the restaurant's perspective is we're having a hard time explaining to our members how to implement the policy, particularly if you're a chain where you have restaurants in unincorporated county and you have restaurants in the city and you have employees maybe that work at both. So we really have an issue with trying to understand how to educate our employers and the workers, as well as the customers. Because there's been no public outreach to the customers on why we're doing this, how we're doing it, and what it means for them. I'm gonna quickly switch over to Recicla, because I have 30 seconds left. So, on Recicla, I think from the restaurant's perspective, we were told that there would be a business roundtable, that there would be discussion of some of the solutions with cost of service and the service quality, and that did not happen. We were never called upon, I brought members to meet with some of you and the Public Works Commissioners, but as far as that process, that didn't happen. In addition, we're very concerned about the service that we're currently receiving, sharing bins, which wasn't discussed--
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you very much. I want the record to reflect, we're joined by members of the Budget Committee on Energy and Environment, Mr. Bloomingfield, Mr. Price, Mr. Sadio, Mr. Corretts, who sits on both committees, Mr. Kokorian, and Mr. O'Farrell, and Mr. Bonn. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Let's go ahead and take a public comment for item number three now. There's a number of speakers on item number three, so I'm gonna start with Gina House. I'm gonna call four of you up at once, if you could please come to the table. Andrea Leon Grossman, are you here? Kevin Patel? Are you, Jenna?
Yes.
Andrea, Kevin? Do you have one minute? You are speaking on item number three.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jenna House. I'm the Director of One Generation Senior Enrichment Center located in Reseda. One Generation is a nonprofit serving older adults throughout the San Fernando Valley in a variety of settings. As a result of the Recicla program, One Generation has been able to expand upon and sustain our partnership with the Los Angeles Regional Food Bank, specifically the Extra Helpings Program. We are now able to accept both non-perishable and perishable food items five days a week, which are then distributed to over 400 seniors each month. We have been able to purchase a custodial fridge and freezer to maintain adequate temperatures of food items that we receive. One Generation remains thankful for the opportunity to be a part of the Recicla program and is thankful for the ability to raise awareness of the benefits that it is bringing to our local aging community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Andrea Leon Grossman, and I'm here to make sure that we know what is at stake. I'm really happy that this morning we adopted the Green New Deal at the City Council and that more work is ahead of us. The United Nations Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change in October said that we have about 10 years to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by 40%. And given all the massive negative climate impacts we already are feeling, like the terrible heat storms and fires in Australia and even in our own city, we really need to act and act fast on climate. Again, I was pleasantly surprised last week to make sure that we're gonna get off of gas in this city and stop the repowering of the gas plants. And now we can just kick it, kick the can down the road with other methane issues. Organics and food waste create a huge amount of emissions, and we have to stop them as soon as possible. Please vote to send this bad agreement back to the negotiation table. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Patel. I am the Downtown Neighborhood Council Sustainability Liaison, as well as a climate reality leader. I am here today to emphasize, given all the strides we as a city have made on environmental issues, we still have work to be done. Just last week, we made a huge stride on stopping the repowering of gas power plants, which I was pleasantly surprised that several of you were joined with the mayor for this initiative. As the city moves forward with its overall recycling programs, we need to make sure we take whatever steps to attack and reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. I am a youth leader in Los Angeles, and I expect that you won't fail our community because of this crisis. And I hope that you all stick with the spirit of your Green New Deal initiatives and send item three forward, because this issue is important to me and my community as a youth member who will be affected. And I am more than happy to write a community impact statement on this issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Yeah, I'm Debbie Decker, and I'm the Executive Director of the West Valley Food Pantry. The Food Pantry is located in the west San Fernando Valley in Woodland Hills and a secondary site in Canoga Park. We feed approximately 3,000 people a month. That's about 36,000 meals. It takes a lot of food to feed that many people, and fortunately, through the L.A. Regional Food Bank, we are able to do that. And we are part of an extra helpings program, which gets us food from all of the local grocery stores, Ralph's, Vons, Albertsons, all of them. From these stores, we pick up between 65,000 and 75,000 pounds of food that would normally go into the dumpsters. This is a symbiotic relationship. They get a tax write-off, and we get food to feed our hungry. The pantry is a huge supporter of recycling. We want to fill bellies, not landfills. Some of the food is beyond the expiration date. That goes into our mulch boxes, which goes into our organic food garden, which also feeds the hungry. The gray water--
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming. The next speakers I'm gonna call up is Janet Gagnon. Janet Gagnon. Beverly Kenworthy. Molly Basler. Ms. Basler, are you here?
Yes, ma'am.
You all have one minute on item number three. Janet?
Good afternoon. Janet Gagnon with the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. We represent over 10,000 mom-and-pop owners throughout L.A. County, many of which are in the city of L.A. We would just urge this body, as it entertains this Recicla contract, to include a new rebate program for those owners that are living under the rent stabilization ordinance. Many of our mom-and-pops own these older buildings. They have long-term tenants. They are far below market rate, and this is a struggle. Their base rent, their base fees went up by 200 to 600%. And I know that under the settlement agreement, we're talking about setting up a new rebate program anyway for the blue bins, so I would urge that these rent-stabilized owners also be addressed in that, so that they can bring their prices more in alignment and keep these most affordable rental housing units. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Yes, hi, I'm Molly Basler. I'm a climate reality leader and environmentalist activist, and I'm here to, in support of renegotiating the item number three. It is really imperative that we move forward with all the information coming out, the Green New Deal, to postpone something that, you know, would worsen our climate here in L.A., worsen our environment. We need to move it forward. We are running out of time, and, like I said, it is imperative. So I am for this item being renegotiated and moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Beverly Kenworthy with the California Apartment Association. We are really disappointed in the settlement, and it does not address in any substantive way all of the issues that we have been raising since this is even an actual ordinance. This is a fatally flawed contract. It was written without any outreach to customers who have been so dramatically impacted with astronomical rate increases. By not reaching out to the stakeholders who are affected by this, you have a program that is a one-size-fits-all and makes compliance extremely challenging. So right now, what we have is a mandate, but we have compliance challenges. What do we want? We want compliance. We want people to recycle. And if we don't go back to the drawing board and throw this agreement out and get back down to what we need to accomplish, I think, you know, you're just kicking this can down the road, and our people are still really suffering under these high increases despite the elimination for a time being of the blue bin fees. It's just, I mean, when your rates are 300 or 400% more, this is, it's nothing.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Michael Zelnicker. I'm the co-chair of the Los Angeles Chapter of the Climate Reality Project, former Vice President Al Gore's organization. The Los Angeles Chapter is almost 600 members. Almost every day, another alarming report comes out alerting us to the consequences of climate change that's happening as a result of the millions of tons of carbon and other greenhouse gases that we are dumping into our atmosphere, treating it like an open sewer. The time has come for us to stop, because if we don't, the catastrophic consequences that we are now facing in the form of extreme weather events like drought and wildfires, the kinds of wildfires that happened all over California in 2018, the rise of sea temperature that causes historic rainfall amounts flooding cities like Houston, Texas. I was pleasantly surprised last week when several council members joined the mayor to stop the repowering of gas power plants. We simply cannot afford to kick the can down the road with other methane issues. Organics and food waste create huge methane emissions, and we have to stop them as soon as possible. Please support Council Member Corretts's motion. We cannot postpone this regulation by even one year. Please vote to send this bad agreement back--
Thank you very much. The next speakers is Nikki. Is there someone here by the name Nikki?
I don't speak.
Nikki, you are here, but you're not speaking. Lyric Kelker? Joshua Deanda? Mark Wagner? Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Lyric Kelker, and I'm a policy associate at LEARN, and we're an economic and community development organization based in Boyle Heights. We know that climate change is accelerating at an astonishing rate, and 40% of our greenhouse gas emissions need to be cut in 12 years. I applaud many of your efforts to stop the repowering of the gas plants, and we're pleased that you're here now to discuss the Recicla program, which is work to divert food from landfills. However, we do need to do more to establish stricter requirements for our organics recycling programs. Thank you for your time.
Sorry about that. Go ahead. Are you Josh?
Yes. Hello, my name is Joshua Deanda. I am a third-year at UCLA studying political science and communication, so I live in Westwood, and my hauler is Athens. I am here for this amendment. I support it, and I see that Recicla has a lot of potential. It has the potential to become one of the greatest waste hauling and sustainable management institutions in the United States. So do not throw away your shot, in the words of Lin-Manuel Miranda. This is your time to take the step to catalyze the sustainable movement for waste management, rid of the fees, rid of the inconsistency, and take the step to be a sustainable waste management system. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Mark Wagner, and I represent six communities in Los Angeles that are owned by a family management company. And these six communities have been paying $341,000 more per year with Recycle LA. My vote would be for you not to vote for this amendment. It doesn't go completely far enough in reducing the prices. I just don't understand how the prices could go up that much. And, to be honest, if you reduce prices 50%, I'm still paying $120,000, $130,000 more dollars per year. I applaud the effort of recycling and the environment and everything, but this money isn't going to recycling. I own six properties out of 66,000 in the entire city of L.A. I don't understand where the money is going, and this amendment doesn't go far enough in reducing these prices. Five of these six are rent-controlled properties. It needs to be delayed and reduced.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Roxana Franco, and I'm a policy associate at the Los Angeles Food Policy Council. Food waste prevention and rescue is one of our key priority areas as an organization. And today, I really wanna uplift how the Recicla program has forged partnerships to ensure that edible food is not sent to landfills. Thanks to Recicla, 376 tons of food have been diverted from landfills thus far, meaning that Los Angeles families in need received approximately 1.5 million meals last year. Getting food out of landfills is important to us. It's important for greenhouse gas reductions and fighting climate change. Whether food is recovered and donated or composted, we hope that the city will prioritize organic waste services and moves forward on building the necessary infrastructure to divert food waste. We are pleased that a decision on rates has been reached, though we understand that this is a compromise, and we are not okay with 100% of the compromise, particularly in regards to organics. That said, we strongly believe that ensuring Recicla's success is integral to the health of our city.
Thank you very much. Next speakers are Linda Escalante, Cecilia Contreras, Robert Northoff, and Alice Berliner. Alice, are you here? Go ahead.
Good morning, Chair. Thank you, councilmember. It's a pleasure to see you today. Linda Escalante is Southern California Legislative Director for the Natural Resources Defense Council, or NRDC, representing nearly 20,000 members and activists in the city of Los Angeles. It's because of our mission statement, and as you know, we're dedicated to sustainability, that we have been a member of Don't Waste L.A. since the inception. That has now, we've been fighting for this program for almost a decade now. And this is a coalition of environmental, environmental justice, business, health, food, and faith organizations. Since the implementation of Recicla, we've seen the immediate phasing out of diesel-burning waste trucks, and we've seen the replacement of those trucks with near-zero emission vehicles, which has removed significant amounts of greenhouse gases from our atmosphere. We've also seen the addition of hundreds of thousands of cubic yards of blue bin material being diverted from landfills every week, which helps us reuse the materials and prevent future depletion of natural resources like oil, wood, and metals. The agreement before you continues to build on the successes and keeps this big picture to the waste zero goals. We support this amendment.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Ele Contraes, and I'm a community organizer at Pacoima Beautiful. I grew up in Pacoima as an organizer and a member of this community. I am deeply invested in working to improve the quality of life of my neighbors. For decades, residents in the San Fernando Valley have been overburdened by multiple sources of pollution that includes the overconcentration of waste facilities in this area. For this reason, Recicla represents a tremendous step forward for our communities. When city council adopted Recicla, it showed that they do care about Pacoima and are committed to improving the air that we breathe and the quality of life of my neighborhood. And ensuring that any and all barriers to free recycling have been removed, including distance and access fees, makes this program stronger. It also incentivizes customers to learn how to work within the program and increase our recycling. The more people recycle, the better our air quality will be. Thank you to the L.A. City Council for ensuring the success of my neighborhood.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. As the Director of the Don't Waste L.A. Coalition, I'd first like to commend all parties involved for displaying their leadership in drafting this amendment. We know it wasn't easy, and what we have before us is the very definition of a compromise. Our coalition is supportive of the final agreement that you all reached, as we believe that it keeps the big-picture goals of the Recicla program in place, while also upholding the strong penalties for any waste hauler who falls short of their contractual obligations, i.e. the stick. But the main reason that we support the amendment before you is because it incentivizes the behavior change needed to make the program's diversion goals a reality through good stewardship and through the pocketbook, i.e. the carrot. The program removes all financial barriers to recycling, as distance and access fees have now been removed from the blue bin, and that will help push the commercial customers to place as much material as possible in the blue bin. Behavior change is hard, as we all know. Similar to the request for people to take three-minute showers or keep their thermostat at 68 degrees during this cold front, it's very difficult to enact behavior change without financial incentive. And this new amendment really gets at the heart of that by making it easier for folks to recycle, so thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Alice Berliner, and I'm the Coordinator for the SOCal Coalition for Occupational Safety and Health. One of the reasons that Recicla was enacted in the first place was because we saw that the old hauling system provided little to no accountability, resulting in horrendous working conditions for waste workers. The waste industry is the fifth most dangerous industry in the country, which a lot of you guys know. It is not uncommon for workers in this industry, who are primarily women and people of color, to lack even the most basic safety equipment, such as gloves, to sort through waste, and often do not have access to clean drinking water in shade. We support the amendment to Recicla because it ensures we still have a clear path to improved worker health and safety. We must see our vision through to truly transform this industry into a high-road industry for Angelenos to work in and to protect the lives of all workers and city residents. So thank you for showing your leadership in addressing community concerns and crafting a solution. In doing so, you are strengthening Recicla by making it easier for Angelenos to participate in the program, and we can still move forward with our vision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers that did not sign up in the back? If not, you did. What's your name?
Armando Flores.
Oh, you're not on here, but come on up. After you're done speaking, I will need you to sign up in the back. For whatever reason, it's not showing. Anyone else?
Okay.
Okay, go ahead. You have one minute. Item number three?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
So my name is Armando Flores with the Valley Initiative in Commerce Association. Like, really, we just want to express our disappointment. The business community was not engaged during the conversations to make changes to the program. Since, well, over the last few years, we've worked with the Recicla folks, the haulers, L.A. sanitation, to come up with changes that would not impact the business community as significantly as it has. So we just hope that moving forward, that all stakeholders, including the business community, will be engaged to ensure that the benefits are given across the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close. Public comment for all items, including general public comment. Members of the Energy Committee, can we go ahead and move items one and two on consent? Is there any objection?
Motion.
Okay. Seeing none, that will be the order. Let's go ahead and read item number three into the record.
Certainly, Madam Chair. Item number three, Board of Public Works' report relative to authorizing the Board to execute amendments to the services contracts associated with the Recicla program. Madam Chair, this matter is also scheduled for council consideration tomorrow.
Right. And members, last week, we approved a settlement agreement created to Recicla program. So before us are those contract amendments to effectuate that settlement. Can I please ask the department to come up to the table? You look hesitant, Mr. Saldivar.
Pardon me?
It's only Monday, I mean Tuesday, I should say. Oh, just before you get started, Mr. O'Farrell, you have a quick amendment on item number two?
Yeah.
So let's go ahead and open that up for reconsideration. Are there any objections? Seeing none, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is in relation to the plastic straw ordinance that, we're awaiting a report from sanitation in relation to the plastic straw ordinance and the disabled community. So that report is forthcoming. We're gonna tie that into, it'll come back to this committee, and the report will contain a rationale for phasing out plastic straws entirely within a couple of years. So that's one piece of, I just wanna state that for the record. But I have a recommended action that I'd like to add as part of this instruction, which is why we need to just read it for the record before we approve. And we're talking about the straw-on-demand ordinance, which will go into effect, slated to go into effect on Earth Day. And to Adina's point, if Adina is still here, she spoke earlier, what this will do is, there are differences between what the county and the state did. What the city will do is we will not exempt fast-food restaurants. At the same time, in the drive-throughs of fast-food restaurants, the person making the sale will inform customers that if they want, if they would like straws for their beverages, they need to request them. So it's pretty basic, it's pretty simple, but we believe that, in the city of Los Angeles, since we have the economy of scale and we have a pretty good bully pulpit in which to lead on environmental issues, that we'll be more comprehensive than what the state or the county will require. And I would encourage restaurant chains, fast-food restaurant chains, to just roll out that policy across the entire chain in the county. So that's, I just wanted to address that. But the instruction specific to the recommended action is directing, so approve the ordinance, but direct the Bureau of Street Services to update the vending rules and regulations to clarify that vending customers must also request straws pursuant to the straws-on-request ordinance.
Members, are there any objections to that? Seeing none? We approve those, that recommendation to go along with item number two. Or you have a, okay. Mr. Corretts?
If I could ask that we reopen item one for a brief direction?
Sure. Let's go ahead and reconsider item number one. That item's now before us, Mr. Corretts. Go ahead.
So the item is relating use and acquisition of zero-emission battery-electric lawn, garden, and maintenance equipment.
Mm-hmm.
I was just gonna ask that we direct staff to look at doing this in the most polluted areas of the city first, so that folks who suffer the most pollution historically get the quickest benefits of it.
Okay. Without objection, that will be the order. So are we, anything else on item number one and two, before we move forward? Okay. Okay. Item number three is now before us. Mr. Saldivar, can you go ahead and give us an overview of the settlement?
Thank you, Chair Martinez, Chair Correa, and Councilmembers. Some very brief comments, and then we'll go into some of the salient points of the amendment. In the process of the development of environmental policy, there are sometimes debatable points of view as to what should be the best and final policy. The elimination of landfilling of solid resources as an environmental practice is a policy that has broad consensus from all sectors of our society, starting with city residents, business community, environmental and academic communities, and of course, our political leadership. In pursuit of this goal of zero waste and making our city landfill-free, we implemented the Recicla program to provide the necessary program and service infrastructure for the commercial and multifamily sectors that will enable the entire city as a whole with its companion residential program to reach our zero-waste goal by 2025. During the implementation, two issues of concern arose inherent, I believe, to the significance of the change and the magnitude of the program itself. A lapse in service reliability and the frustration felt by customers by the existence of extra service charges created an impediment for customers to recycle, and therefore, an unintended and detrimental counterforce to achieving the program's zero-waste goal. Both your council committees, in particular, the Energy, Climate Change, and Environmental Justice Committee, have been at the forefront in finding a resolution to these two issues, and we appreciate it very much. Service reliability has been fully restored to the satisfaction of the customers since early 2018. And today, we hope, with your approval and the contract, of the contract amendment, as recommended by L.A. Sand and the Board of Public Works, and the subsequent approval by the mayor, we will have resolved the second issue of the barriers to recycling created by the extra charges, thus making Blue Recycling free to all Recicla customers, and now truly providing customers with an incentive to recycle to their full potential. $14 million per year of extra service charges for Blue Recycling will be eliminated from Recicla customers following the amendment, the approval of the amendment. We know that Recicla is a brand-new program with its share of growing pains. It is very clear to us in L.A. Sand that you, the City Council, and the mayor expect us to always be responsive and accountable to the city customers, and to also hold the Recicla service providers accountable to fulfill the expectations and requirements of their Recicla contracts. We renew our pledge to do so. And with that, Dan will go over the salient points of the amendment.
Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon. Dan Myers, L.A. Sanitation, Environment. I will make my summary brief. I'm sure there's a number of questions, and I'll be able to get into details as we go through those questions. Start with, although many of the difficulties experienced during transition is now behind us, there was a need to enhance certain aspects that remain an issue for a number of customers. This contract amendment addresses the need to promote recycling by removing barriers to recycling and help mitigate cost impacts. Through months of negotiations with our Recicla service providers, RSPs, we developed an amendment that I believe is a benefit to Recicla customers. These benefits to Recicla customers will be in the following three key areas. Removing barriers to recycling. This is achieved by eliminating all extra service charges on blue bins related to access and distance charges. Establishing an optimization period. During this optimization period, there'll be increased education to customers on how to recycle and reduce their contamination in their blue bin. Education is crucial during the optimization period. This will include door-to-door outreach to tenants at multifamily complexes and employees at commercial properties, as well as the property managers and property owners. The settlement agreement requires RSPs to do, or Recicla service providers, to perform an aggressive outreach and education program. The city in concert will perform its own outreach and education program on Recicla. Customer cost mitigation will be achieved via deferment of rate increases to customers beyond that of CPI, and through a moratorium on assessment of contamination fees through the year 2020. And skip all that. Other contract adjustments included clarifications to liquidated damages associated with repeat miscollections, modifications to the recycling not provided liquidated damages. The requirements for the RSPs to remove over a million tons of waste from landfills remains the same as in the existing contract. However, the timing of the measurement of the interim disposal targets and projections and disposal targets, liquidated damages for those were modified. I'll be happy to get into as much detail as you would like with the different aspects of the settlement agreement.
Okay.
That concludes my brief presentation.
Thank you. Colleagues, the council already approved the settlement. So, before us are the contract amendments. Do you have any questions for sanitation? Mr. Corretts.
No questions, just a comment, which I've made before in closed session, but I'd certainly like to make it an open session, which is, I think we all know, and was mentioned by some of the speakers, that we have a very short timeline if we hope to avoid the worst effects of climate change. And so, we should be taking every possible step that we can. And lately, we have been, by and large. We've introduced support for Green New Deal at the federal level and our own local Green New Deal. We took a dramatic step to close gas plants, and yet, we're about to take a step backwards by giving the haulers an extra year without liquidated damages to implement their food waste program. And this allows a lot of additional methane to be released into the atmosphere. Methane, as we all know, is much worse in the short term than carbon dioxide. I think it's 84 times worse. And we shouldn't be giving a year, and we shouldn't be cutting liquidated damages in half. We'd be dramatically reducing the motivation for people to start on time. Some of our vendors are environmentally focused enough, and they might start at the right time without liquidated damages. It's possible that none of them do. It's pretty certain that all of them won't without the hammer over their heads. So, I'm disappointed that we're taking this step. I think we could go back and tell our vendors, this is the one change, and by and large, with some of them intended to implementing it, towards implementing it anyway, I think you could get the same deal with that one change. So, I would ask for that, and I'm going to have to vote against this agreement based on that. One thing I will be asking for and introducing a motion in the next few days is that we take a few steps to try and make this program more effective. One, that we use the year that we have to launch an organics implementation team that drastically increases our educational efforts, both to customers and vendors. Two, that we direct sanitation staff to work with the haulers to come up with a strong and consistent educational message, so that we're all speaking in one voice. What I don't want to see is what we saw during Recicla, where education was done randomly during the rollout. We were told that one zone was doing it better than another zone. I think we want to make sure that we have the same message and the same educating. I would also ask that, starting in 2020, we rate haulers based on their environmental success, and particularly relating to their success with their food waste recycling. And lastly, that we direct the CLA and CAO to closely monitor the city's shares of expenditures associated with the removing barriers to recycling program, and report on the status at the end of each fiscal year, and conduct an administrative and financial review of Recicla during the rates-look-back period to determine their effectiveness.
Members, are there any other questions? Mr. Sadio?
I support many of the comments of my colleague. There's other concerns that are raised in closed session and directly to people, and I will continue to raise these, is while I agree with all the laudable goals of this effort, I share concern with respect to its indirect, unintended adverse impacts on poor people, particularly tenants who are in nonprofit, affordable SRO units. Those are unanticipated, unanticipated costs that they cannot cover. I've had buildings come to me in my district in panic over concerns of the costs, and we have to figure out a way so that those costs are afforded by those who can afford them and who can address them. But when people live in affordable units, nonprofits, SROs, there's no margin for them to absorb the costs that have been presented, and therefore, we have to anticipate that so that we don't have the adverse impacts that are unintended. People being displaced by these costs, people being put on the streets by these costs, people made homeless by these costs are the environmental damage of today, and they have to be addressed today. And so, we will be moving forward with motions on that.
Any other questions, members? Mr. Blumenthal?
Just a comment, and certainly share a lot of the concerns that have been raised by Mr. Corretts and others. I've had a lot of frustration with Recicla L.A., and we all have, particularly the rate increases that have been out there. But as Chairwoman noted at the beginning of this, what's in front of us is not a relitigation of Recicla L.A. What's in front of us is these amendments, and we talked about it extensively in closed session. And while I would have, there are a number of things that I wish were in this agreement and that caused lowering of the rates. For me, you know, and one thing I was satisfied with in the closed-session discussions is that voting no is not going to make those things happen. So, you know, so I'm reluctantly voting yes on this and supporting it, even though it doesn't have everything that I want in there by any means. But I think the alternative means that we end up potentially with a worse agreement, and we don't get some of the good things that are in here. So, I'm going to support this, but I wanted to at least express my reluctance and concern. And I understand some of that times, always whenever a compromise comes, we're not the ones negotiating the deal, you guys are, and I, we have a great team that does the negotiations. So, I trust you do the best that you can and get the best deal we can get, even though it's by no means, there are a lot of things in here that I wish we could add in here. But we can't relitigate it, so I'm...
Very well said, Mr. Blumenthal. Did you want to say something from our city attorney's office?
Yes, please. I want to thank the members for their comments, both today and whatever has been discussed prior. Just want to remind that we are in an open session, and to the extent comments are made by the clients, you, or the attorneys in closed session, that those should remain in closed session. But thank you, everybody, for your comments today.
Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to put out there, after we approve these amendments, that in the coming years, that we really take a look at what leverage we have before and until we decide to give a five-year extension of this contract. What our leverage points are, or if we're just locked into the same thing moving forward after 10 years. Because the concerns that were addressed by Mr. Sadio, Mr. Corretts, and others are very legitimate, and we need to take a look at what our possibilities are for a negotiation of some of those terms, once we start talking about renewing for five years and then possibly another five years after that. We need to take greater control over some of these deficiencies that were locked into this contract. So, I just want to put that out there, and that's what I'm going to be looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Anyone else? Mr. Corren Price.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, thank staff for all the work done on this. I know it hasn't been easy. The comment I made in session, making the best of a bad situation, but I'm hopeful that we can make it a win-win for everyone. I stress the comment made by Councilman Sadio about education, you know, making sure that we have a robust education program to inform not only the property owners, the managers, but tenants, because they're the ones that are really going to be doing the lifting on this. And so, and I know, you know, there was some discussion about the intensity of that outreach effort. I just hope it stays on the burner, and even could be the subject of an update, so that we have some confidence that, in fact, word is getting out, people are understanding what's at risk, what's at stake, and the role they can play in making this a successful program.
Any other comments? Mr. Corren?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you both to sanitation and city attorney's office for your work on this. I think none of us are popping champagne corks over this. This is not something that is going to cure all the problems of Recicla, for sure. There's many fundamental issues, as Mr. Blumenthal pointed out, that are inherent to this policy that are not being addressed by this agreement, and no one suggests that they are. That's not what's before us. That those fundamental issues will be addressed, I think, as Mr. O'Farrell, you know, implied, and Mr. Corretts suggested, by the rating system that he's proposing. Those will definitely be addressed. And for those who are listening carefully in this room, those problems will be addressed, make no mistake about it. But it will happen in the due course of going forward, as we've discussed. What's before us now is this particular agreement, and what causes me to, most to support it, I think, are a couple of things. Number one is the avoidance of the next wave of complaints that we will have, especially from apartment owners, over contamination charges. And I know with certainty that those will be coming in massive waves because of the inherent difficulty of getting tenants in apartment buildings to recycle. And without the kind of robust outreach that we've talked about here, and that I think all members have insisted upon, we will never approach anywhere near our diversion goals in multifamily settings without that kind of an outreach effort. So, that's critically important. I think this settlement, excuse me, these contract amendments advances that cause. And, Mr. Saldivar, I wanted to ask you, with regard to contamin, to the degree, with regard to the degree of contamination, the agreement changes the contamination definition from 10% to 20% during the optimization period. So, right now, what percentage of blue bin pickups that you pick up are contaminated? What's our contamination rate in the citywide residential blue bin program?
It hovers between 25% to 30%, Councilman.
Okay. And this is in primarily single-family homes, where there's direct accountability by the person putting the trash in the can. Do you have a sense of what it is overall in the MERVs across the city right now?
We know that in the commercial sector, it's much easier to deal with the types of commodities only because the generation tends to be larger of fewer types of commodities. And the multifamily sector is definitely a challenge, probably compounded more so than in the residential. And so, the contamination period and the moratorium, if you will, during the optimization is extremely valuable, as you indicated, Councilman, so that we are able to spend the time with the customers, what constitutes contamination and why. And can we relax some of that by having more stuff be recyclable? This is the wrong market time to do that kind of stuff. We know it. But we have to be more creative.
We absolutely do. That's going to be subject of a lot more separate discussions that we're going to have on the policy. But I do hope that if AGLA and CAA and VICA are still here, that they understand that this amendment will, in fact, avoid a significant... this amendment will, in fact, avoid a significant amount of charges that would otherwise be imposed on apartment owners because of contamination. It reduces the degree to which those charges will take place. So, I think that is an important objective, and the outreach that will be accomplished from this will also be an important objective. And just on the organics part, Mr. Kretz spoke on this, and I think spoke very persuasively and succinctly. But just to be clear, nothing in this program, in these amendments, necessarily delays the implementation of an organics program, does it?
It does not. The goal, the ultimate goal remains the same, 90% overall by 2025, and 65% diversion within the contract requirements.
So, it takes away a little bit of our hammer, but it doesn't delay implementation. And so, since all the haulers are here and represented by their representatives today, just, I hope that they are all hearing that it's very clearly the intent of these committees, and I think our entire council, to ensure that they implement that program with all deliberate speed, regardless of these amendments. Okay. That's not directed at you. That's directed to the audience. So, thank you.
Are there any other comments? Mr. Bonner?
Everything has been said, and it does not need to be said again by me. So, I'll just, with minimal enthusiasm, move approval, along with the Kretz's direction.
Thank you. I do have one additional instruction. So, I move that we approve the contract amendments under item number three with the following instruction: To instruct the CLA and the CAO's office to closely monitor the city's share of expenditures associated with the removal, removing barriers to recycling program, and report on the status at the end of each fiscal year. Are there any objections? Seeing none, that will be the order. Thank you. Our meeting is adjourned.
Wait, wait. Vote.
Oh, you want, you, Mr. Kretz needs to, you need to vote. Why?
Call vote.
I did, I moved it. Go ahead. Let's go ahead and let's take individual votes, because Mr. Kretz needs to cast his vote.
I would be a no vote.
He didn't introduce him.
You do?
I'm going to introduce him tomorrow. So, there's a no vote on Mr. Kretz. Anyone else? Seeing none? Thank you very much. I thought you were voting.